Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone and call this meeting to order. First, we have approval of our agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as it stands? Hearing none, I need approval or a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Next, we have the good news portion of our meeting. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn it over to Ms. Jessup for our first recognition this evening.
Yes, good evening, Board and Special Kids. It gives me great pleasure tonight to get to recognize and introduce our newest National Board certified teacher. If I could ask Mrs. Ashley Jones, teacher at Mount Olive Elementary, to come forward. Mrs. Jones received her National Boards in the area of middle generalist certification. She has been with us since 2012. She started her career with us at Pine Hall Elementary School and then moved over to Mount Olive Elementary School. She is quite an outstanding teacher. She graduated from UNC Chapel Hill in 2011 in elementary education. And so, as we know, and we shared with you early on, this is an extremely rigorous process. North Carolina still stands as number one in the nation in terms of having the most National Board certified teachers with over 22,000. This now brings Stokes County Schools to 43 National Board certified teachers. And before you come to have a picture with her, I would like to also recognize with her tonight, her family. I'm sure you'd like to meet also if I could ask her husband, Mr. Jared Jones, who is principal at East Surrey High School. And then their children Harrison and also Griffin are here. So, I know they gave her a great deal of support. So, please join me in congratulating Mrs. Ashley Jones.
And Ms. Jones, if you'd walk over to that side and the board will join you for a picture. Congratulations. Mr. Jones, I'll be happy to share that picture with Dr. Reeves at our next superintendent meeting. All right, the next one, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rose. And Mr. Rose, if you want to do yours back to back, that'd be fine.
Yes, sir. Glad to do it. All right, the first one that I would like to talk about, tonight's just kind of night for me to recognize a lot of our partners who have helped us out with some grants and some different programs for our children. The first one I'd like to touch on tonight is our collaboration with the Stokes Family YMCA for the 2021 Blue Cross Blue Shield North Carolina Swim Grant Proposal. This is a minister in partnership between our school system and the YMCA. The YMCA received a grant to provide water safety instruction to all of our second grade students within the county. It's delivered in two components. We have an in-class instruction component and free swim lessons offered to our students. The in-class instruction includes backyard pool and sun safety, open waterfront safety, that includes lakes, rivers, creeks, and boats, beachfront safety, explaining the flags, rip currents, and lifeguards. And then, they will review those three sessions and what to do in an emergency. Then, they have opened up several nights to offer free swim lessons to our students. So, with this grant, it's a great opportunity for our kids. And I think it's some learning that could possibly save someone's life in the future. So, at this time, I will invite our members from the YMCA and present you with this good news certificate. And if there's any information that you all would like to add, that would be great as well. And thank you all so much for working with us.
We just want to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to continue to be a collaborative partner with Stokes County Schools, the strongest collaborative partner that we have. And it is an honor to serve the students together with you. Thank you.
And Board, if y'all would like to join them for a picture?
The next piece of good news that I have for you is just an update regarding the I-CARES grant that we had received in the fall and that we kicked off this semester. Again, what we had looked at with this, we have a nine-week after-school program for all of our middle schools. And that has been in partnership with Insight and the YMCA. We're also looking at an additional summer camp week for the 7th through the 11th for our students as well, from 8:00 in the morning to 1:50 in the afternoon for an extra learning opportunity. So far, if you look at the total enrollment of our program, and this has been one where we've had some students come and step out, but then, you know, return back. So, we haven't been at full capacity as of yet. But all in all, we're serving approximately 115 students within the county. And this has been in partnership with Insight and the YMCA. Ms. Lori Wall has been heading up that program and doing an absolutely fantastic job. We had our first report, our interim report, turned in. I've not received the feedback yet, but it was a very positive experience with that. And we've invited the SERV organization to come and view our programs as well. So, I just wanted to take tonight to recognize the excellent partnerships that we have in Stokes County with our local YMCA and with Insight and helping us to seek out grants like this and better serve the students of Stokes County. So, please give those organizations a hand. I'd also like to get a picture with that group as well. We also have those partners come up for a picture with the Board, with Insight and the YMCA.
The final, but certainly not the least of our Board's spotlights tonight. The Board of Education, myself, Stokes County Schools, would like to thank Life Bright Community Hospital of Stokes and the Stokes County Health Department for partnering with us to complete the vaccination clinic for our employees at the end of February and the end of March. And we appreciate the partnership, the smoothness of that process. I will tell you from talking with our employees and people that went through that process, they could not have been more impressed. And it's hard to impress teachers when it comes to logistic and hurting people and all that, because we're pretty good at it. We do it all day, every day. But y'all took the cake in that. And we just would like to thank you, Representatives from Life Bright and the Health Department, Tammy Martin. If y'all could come forward, Mr. Rose has some certificates. And thank y'all for that partnership. In one day, we did over 400 vaccines. And after it went so smoothly, other people wanted to do it, and they were extremely accommodating, working with other people's schedules to get even more vaccinated. So, in one day, we had over 400 of our 900 employees vaccinated. Couple of weeks. And Madam Chair, that concludes the good news section of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you to all of our, you know, all of our partnerships and all the hard work for many different groups in our community. Thank you guys so much. Next, and if you would like, it's, you know, just visiting for this portion, if you would like to leave, you are welcome to do so now. Next, we have the public comments section. Is there anyone signed up? Ms. Bullock?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, we have one person signed up for public comments.
All right.
Chrissy Dixon. You have three minutes to address the Board.
Thank you. First, thank you for taking the time to allow parents and citizens to come speak to you about school needs. I'm a parent of two in the Stokes County school systems, and I also am a member of the Pine Grove Athletic Boosters. So, I come today to talk about expressing our concerns around the tennis courts at Pine Grove Middle School. I've heard that they've been added to the capital budget from Pine Grove for several years, but they just haven't made the cut. So, our concern is really to express the safety. There are numerous cracks on the tennis court, some that are over four inches deep. And so, we're concerned from our student's side, as well as the visiting students that come to play tennis matches. And we also, you know, it also can be an unfair playing advantage, too, when those balls hit those deep cracks and take crazy bounces. So, I'm here today to, you know, share this information and to ask for consideration when you're working through the school budgets to, you know, consider adding Pine Grove as an opportunity to resurface the courts. I have some photos. If I can leave them to share, if not, I ask you just to stop by and take a visit yourself to take a look at them. So, thank you again for your time. And, you know, when students walk away from Pine Grove, we want them to be talking about the tennis match and the excitement versus walking away with, you know, how bad the tennis courts are and some of those cracks. So, if I can leave these here, is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose, would you take those and we'll get those, make sure that we get those distributed?
That completes public comments.
We'll just keep them there, and then we'll look at it after the meeting.
And thank you for your time, ma'am, for coming out and speaking to the Board. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. I would need approval of the work session minutes for March 29th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have discussion agenda, discussion of superintendent's budget recommendations and Item A current expense.
And Board, last month at the work session, Ms. Moore presented the superintendent's recommended budget for this upcoming 2021-22 school year. You've had a couple of weeks to look over that. This would be a chance for you to discuss that further as a Board, to make recommendations. Again, we don't have to vote on move this to action tonight. But we are facing a deadline of May 15th. And our work session would be the last scheduled meeting before that date. So, we have tonight and another work session on the 3rd that are scheduled meetings where we could discuss this before the deadline, or the Board could call another meeting if necessary. But at this point, I'll turn it over to you for your discussion.
Any comments or concerns regarding the budget or any changes anyone would like to see made? First, we'll start with Mr. Rogers.
Not at this time.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bryant, do you have any changes you would like to be, you know, you would like to see made or recommendations?
I'm going past, ma'am.
Okay. And Ms... Pat, would you, do you have any, Ms. Messick?
Well, I would just like to throw out a few ideas just for us to think about. If, these aren't numbered, but I was looking at the two technology engineer positions and the 11 media assistant positions. And I voiced a few concerns when Dr. Rice had...
Turn your microphone toward you a little bit.
Thank you. I voiced my concerns a little bit when Dr. Rice had gone over the COVID budget. And so, I'd just like to say that if we're going to hire two technology engineer positions and 11 media assistant positions, if, you know, it works out in the budget, that I feel it might be more effective since we, do we already have two technology people that go around and help at the school?
Ms. Barker, would you like to explain our situation there?
We have two technicians that are contracted with South Data, so outside third-party resources. And we have Sonia Norman, who is our in-house technician. We would be much more beneficial to have two people, two additional people on staff. We share South Data, of course, with other corporate clients. So, if emergencies arise, they leave us. They're down to two technicians with them. In the past, we've had three. They are down to two positions, so it's just two folks serving us and other corporate clients. So, we believe that having two in-house technicians to serve all of our schools would be much more beneficial.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Has there been the occurrence where South Data failed to perform their contracted duties?
Well, they've been limited with two staff members. And certainly among 19 schools, they've, other emergencies have come up, and they've not been able to do their duties. Yes, sir.
So, we just have Sonia, and that's all that's on staff for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Well, that kind of alters what I'm going to say, but...
Well, we do have Delilah Brady, our instructional technology facilitator. But that's a different role. That's not as much technician.
Oh, okay. So, we have the one technician instead of two, was I thought?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, my thought was, instead of hiring, sometimes when you hire media assistants, people, you know, have a frame of mind of helping in the library and working with the books and like the media assistants years ago did. But nowadays, it is just such a burden with the technology in every single school that my idea was, and it's just an idea, okay, I'm throwing out. Instead of hiring 11 media assistants and two technology engineering positions, that we just hire maybe eight to 10 technology positions. That way, each school could have one person that could go to the schools on alternating days, maybe three days one week, two days the next. And that way, all of these Chromebooks that are piling up at the school could have a chance to be fixed or looked at and say, you know, if we need a brand-new Chromebook because this can't be fixed. There's also other things that the technology assistant can work with. They can work with the smart boards, the Chromebooks, the printers. A lot of times, they go out, they need help. So, there's a lot of technology issues just other than Chromebooks. And if there could be a person that could come to help with school every other day, every other day, then I think that would be a wise way to use the money. And so, it's just a thought that instead of, you know, calling the media assistants, that they could be all technology assistants.
Well, we had discussed that, and we actually wanted it to be media slash tech assistants, because sometimes our, we have so many different levels of experience, tech experience among our media folks. And, you know, we all went to school for media, library, science, and technology, we just sort of had to grab on and hold. So, we felt like a tech slash media assistant would be really beneficial, like what you're saying, to help everyone. And sometimes that, if you say media slash tech, that would alleviate. If I could let the media coordinator go check on a smart board, I could check in books if I was a media assistant, or vice versa if it were the tech specialist.
Well, I think that sometimes, you know, if you hire someone that's not really media savvy, or not media savvy, but technology savvy, then what's going to happen is that person would probably be doing a lot of the media work that... And I don't know that that would alleviate a lot of problems. Whereas, they need this technology help now. And, you know, in the middle school and the high school, the media coordinators don't teach classes. But in the elementary school, they teach classes, they do the technology, they are the testing coordinator. You know, there's a whole lot of hats that they wear. Plus, they're the library or media teacher. So, they're having classes come in, they're, you know, so there's a lot of hats, four hats, and they're not small. And so, I just felt like if we could, for the next however many years the money would hold out, that we could have somebody to come in and be assured that every other day, or, you know, three days a week, one week, two days a week, the next, one person per school. I think that would help a lot. That's just my idea on that.
Any input or, I mean, is that a possibility? Or you feel like that you have the best-case scenario pretty much put forward?
I mean, I think if we tag it as tech slash media with an emphasis on tech.
Maybe a requirement there, of course, job description and requirement.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Well, and when we first looked at this, and yes, I failed to mention the ESRS money before we started going around. I was going to let it go through the first time and then talk about the ESRS money. But when we first looked at this as a proposed budget item, we were looking to try to, again, give relief to the schools. We've heard that loud and clear that we have technology issues. We talked about, you know, full school coverage of 19 people to have one at every school. Of course, that's 19 people, and it brings up two problems, a budgetary problem of paying 19 people, and then a human resources problem of finding 19 qualified people. And so, when we looked at that, and then knowing that some of our schools are smaller and have less Chromebooks, what plan could we come up with? We turned it over to the tech team to look at, and that's when they came up with the recommendation of the two technology engineer positions and then the 11 media tech assistants to work on that. Since then, we do have the ESRS funding that we discussed. And out of that proposal that I put together that will come under the COVID updates, I have taken two of the items out of the budget to place with the ESRS funding, which would be the two technology assistant positions and the 11 media assistant positions, which would, you know, be $588,560 for those two line items to come out of the ESRS funding for the next four years. Now, at that point, the Board would still be facing, the district would be facing still the need. But this would also give us four years to determine, is that enough? Is that too much? Is that not enough? And with budget flexibility with amendments, we may get these and next year say, you know, we need to make a budget amendment out of this and take some money out of another line item in the ESRS funding and increase this. We may decide we don't need it this many, and we could look at decreasing this. So, this was kind of a, again, trying to, when Ms. Barker came to me with the teachers, schools have come with their needs, I said, get with your team, determine what you think would meet the needs. Not to give, you know, the grandiose wish list, but not to, you know, cut budgets. What do you need? What do you think could get us through? And this was what the tech team recommended. But yes, would it be, could five technology people instead of two and 11? In some ways, yes, that could serve better needs, and in some ways, the 11 gets more hands-on deck in the schools more often. But it would be a greater assistance with the other people. They may not show up as much, but they would have a higher level of expertise. So, kind of our thought was to let the media techs handle the things that they could handle. But then with hiring the extra engineers, if it's something they couldn't handle, then they pass it off to those other people. But that was the thinking behind the proposal that we put in. But again, this is a Board budget, and if the Board wants to change, we can certainly do that, make an adjustment.
I mean, I definitely agree with Ms. Messick as far as the mini hats that our media specialists wear, and I'm sure, you know, the help that's needed there. Like she said, it's just addressing both issues.
Sure.
With the help teaching classes and managing testing and the troubleshooting with technology.
Is there no way to just contract some of this out? And the reason I'm saying that is my concern is, we're looking at 16 new headcount with one in maintenance. Now, I understand the one in maintenance, and I think we're about at critical mass on that one. So, that's still 15 new headcount that we're trying to put into a budget in a year that we've seen ADM drop 10%. We're not sure what we're going to come out of it. So, if we could take some of the ESRS money that is earmarked for technology, contract it, find out what our actual needs are going to be, vice versa, our student load is for a year or two. Because my deepest fear is, let's say we took the money funded 15 positions, and in four years, we have no more money, and we have 15 positions that are going to transition out. We're going to generate a load on the backs of the Stokes County taxpayers that they can't bear. Where a contracted service, we could find out what we're actually needing. Now, I realize South Data may be down to two people, but if you tell them, I'm going... I want this many hours, they'll find technology people and give them to us, because when we pay the check, that's a great thing about capitalism, we pay the check, we get the service. If we don't get the service, we don't pay the check. Somebody will, will want that check.
Uh, I also had not said five people hired. I said eight to 10.
Right. I was just looking at the budget number of trying to make, out of, again, $588,000, work with a number of people of what techs cost versus what media assistants cost.
Well, I thought we were gonna take, look at taking that out of that ESRS money.
You're thinking that, um,
Well, you can use technology.
Item three would kind of go away altogether?
Well, it'd be taken out of that COVID money. Couldn't it be done that way?
Yes, ma'am. Again, for four years, um, the COVID money is there to help with these, that could help with these positions. Yes, ma'am.
But after four years, it's done?
Yes, yes, sir.
And in essence, so would these positions.
Well, we need to do something to, um, help with the technology. Um, we never know what's gonna be down the road, but, um, I just feel like that we need to, um, do something to, um, repair all these, um, items that are broken and can't be used. Not, like I said, it's just, uh, it's just a thought.
Any comments, Mr. Robertson?
Uh, yes, a couple things. Um, on the, uh, new request, the instructional coaches, how many instructional coaches do we currently have? Is, are adding two more?
Mr. Rose?
Right now, we have one for the middle school, three who are full-time instructional coaches, and then our APs at the two largest elementary serve halftime AP, halftime instructional coach.
So, pay-wise, we have five. We have four elementary and one secondary. We had two more in the past that were cut with budget cuts. This is asking to restore those two.
You know, what would be the job description of these instructional coaches? What do they really do?
So, I'll speak to the middle school side of this, um, and then Ms. McGee, feel free to add as, as you wish. Some of the things that we take part in-
Mr. Rose, if you could aim that mic towards you, please.
Sorry. Some of the things that we work through every single year is, they help us to set the pacing. Uh, we break down what's called an at-a-glance document, which really gives the teachers guidance into what we're covering for the year. They find resources, uh, for the teachers, and they break down all the components from DPI that we receive in curriculum. The toughest part of this, you know, for me right now, is the limited amount of time that she is having to work with teachers. Because when you look at this, typically, they're the non-threatening side of, of, of teaching. They're non-evaluative. So, as a principal, when I got to work with my middle school instructional coach, I would, you know, they would say, we would have dialogue going back and forth, and they would work with the teachers individually, providing resources and helping them to grow. Um, Mr. Robertson, honestly, it's probably the best PD component that we have for our teachers, because we can send them out to a three-day workshop, and then they come back. The teacher coaches allow the follow-up, and they can work with them individually, which is, you know, when you have that continuity, it, it really does help our teachers to grow. And with just having one over three middle schools, that is extremely challenging. By the time we get our professional learning time and go over the, the scores and break down their data, which are all components of this job too, um, I can get you a written job description. We have that prepared, or when we have looked for this previously. Um, i- it's a laundry list of duties.
Okay.
Ms. McGee?
Thank you.
Um, just to add to what Mr. Rose said, um, the instructional coaches in elementary serve three schools each. They provide supports to the teachers through professional development for, down to breaking down their data, one-to-one meetings, um, or not meetings, but, um, collaboration. They work very hard. At the beginning of this school year, I shared with the board, um, from each elementary principal and from each coach, what they did in their position and how they were utilized. I'll be glad to share that again with you guys as y'all have come onto the board, um, so that you can review it. But many of the things Mr. Rose said, um, we have an elementary website, um, that's on part of our district website, that provides all the resources that helps support with curriculum. Um, they complete our pacing, they complete, um, for example, we just finished up with our mock EOGs. They create the mock EOGs to help prepare our teachers and our students for, um, the EOGs as they're going forward. They also help them break down the data after it's done, and then they help plan and pace for supports as they're going toward the EOG. So lots of things like that. At our elementary school, that is a D school, they provide lots of supports there as well. Um, they also, with us getting ready to take on the science of reading, that has just, legislation that has just been passed, they've all had foundational training in that, and will be providing supports to our staff. Um, the two APs that are split, bless their hearts, because they're trying to do AP duties and instructional coach duties at the same time. But they help with PLCs, they had, they're a big part of MTSS to make sure we're meeting all the requirements of that. So, anything that you could remotely think of that's academic, and, um, they work in collaboration with the principals as well, because the principals are the instructional leaders. But like Doug said, they're not evaluative, except for the two APs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll work them to death in closing.
Now,
Thank you.
One question. These instructional coaches are-
Mike, can you get your, get it closer? Sorry, I can't hear you good. Thank you.
Dun, dun, dun. These instructional coaches, they come out of the classroom, right?
Yes, sir.
And when we phased them out, they just went back into the classroom, correct?
No. Uh, like, my position, I was an instructional coach. When I took this position, it was phased out. It didn't, we didn't rehire when I took this position.
I know, but what I'm saying is, in years past, when we went from three instructional coaches at the middle schools to one, those individuals either left the system or were allowed to go back into the classroom, as we-
Correct. We did not lay anyone off.
No.
The ground, the ground rules I'm trying to lay here is, if we could use the COVID relief money for instructional coaches, I think we might be better served, you're asking for two, upping that number, because we have a whole generation that are a year behind. Uh, with the amount of Fs we've seen on report cards and the amount of students that aren't, this may be an excellent way. And then in four years, if our ADM is sliding, then we can go back to a classroom through retirement, through reallocation, through leaving the system. I wouldn't be against that one. Uh, instructional coaches have always taken the bite. Now we've got four years that we've got to take the student body we have now and leapfrog them back up to where they should be. And, am I hearing right, that instructional coaches would be a valuable asset? Because in our, and in our survey, the biggest, the biggest deficit we seemed, our employee survey was, everybody felt like they were out on exile island. This would be a way for them to collaborate, if you can get the instructional coaches that work in one school to work with the instructional coaches at the next school, so that we don't have our little pods of prosperity and some in the desert that get left by.
In our, both of our instructional coach teams, uh, support each other. Even this past two years, we brought the middle school instructional coach in with the elementary instructional coaches, so they have a team. And we had, do have team meetings every month. Um, um, just a little background in history, and you may remember this, Mr. Rogers, I'm not sure when you were on the board, but instructional coaches, when they first started the position under Myra Cox, there was six of them.
Right.
So over the years, it has dwindled down to what we have now. Six in elementary and three in middle school, just, uh-
I, I'm just going in, I'm not trying to single out a, a school. We take a Germanton or Sandy Ridge, where they have one grade level, one fifth grade.
Right.
Well, if that fifth grader teacher needs some assistance, it's not like Poplar Springs, where they can go down to the hall and ask the, what, the two peers. There's no peer review, no peer assistance, no peer anything. This may be a way to help get us all back on the same page and, and rowing the boat in the same direction.
I mean, I think that's, my concern too is, you know, we are, you know, the students are behind, and, um, I think we want to make sure that we've got everything that we need to get them back up to speed, and to get, and to really get our performance level up. I think that's one thing that, uh, that we're gonna have to really concentrate on is, is this, is the system is to, is to get our performance up.
And I believe that's that continuity piece that Mr. Rose always speaks about, yeah.
And I'm thinking that-
I agree with what you guys are saying.
And I'm thinking these are people out of the classroom, so that it's not like we've hired a new, we've created a new position that we're never gonna use if we can't fund. We can always, you know, as we, as we have caught up, and the budget hits us, if it hits us in a, impacts in a negative way, or ADM continues to trend as we are, then we could, um, send them back to the classroom to continue their prosperity just on a smaller scale. But we haven't hired, we haven't, we haven't put on a big headcount that we've got to turn around and reduce.
Uh, one other thing, or a couple of the things, uh, we had spoke about it before our previous meetings, is the, uh, high school athletic trainers. Do we have an idea now? Is that, uh, is that something that we're gonna have to fund, or?
Well, the, the partnership has worked very well. Uh, there's, there's no doubt about that. Uh, the high, that's, the high school athletic trainers are not a requirement for our budget. Um, does it go with school safety? Absolutely. Um, but that partnership has worked well this, this spring, and we certainly hope that it can continue moving forward.
So, do you see that as something we're gonna leave in the budget?
Well, a- again, that's a recommendation, but we could certainly, to be honest, I didn't expect that would be the pass, but I wanted to put it in there, again, especially after the letter that y'all received and realizing, to let y'all know what that cost would be. But, you know, if it gets cut, I understand it, and we do have a viable backup in place.
Okay. And on, uh, uh, page one, uh, the budget, uh, the firefighter academy, is that gonna, is that a separate line item? Um, Ms. Moore, does that stay as a separate line item, line item? Is that firefighter academy, uh, teacher position?
Separate, because it's coded differently from our regular instructional teachers. So it's a CTE position, so it's pulled out separately. Yes, sir.
Okay. And, um, uh, one other thing is, uh, uh, on page one, um, well, it's on page nine, uh, item number three, uh, we have the, um, uh, page nine, item number three is the band materials. Um, we've, I guess, funded up for $6,000 for a while, and it's my understanding that that goes, uh, there's six bands in the school, uh, in the, in the system, three high schools, three middle schools. Now, they each get $1,000 apiece. And, uh, that is to do, uh, instrument repairs, new instruments, uh, music, sheet music. Um, I really feel like if that's underfunded, uh, there's no way that the band can buy any kind of, uh, uh, instruments, repairs, uh, their sheet music that they need to do for six, for a thousand dollars a school. Um, I know, uh, I'm more familiar with the band at West Oaks, and, um, and we have a band boosters there that raises probably close to 30,000 a year, uh, just to help with some of these things. Uh, and I wouldn't expect us to put any kind of money like that, but, uh, I would like to see us increase that, uh, to maybe, uh, uh, more in a line of, uh, three or $4,000 for the high school, and then maybe a couple thousand for the, uh, middle school, at least to start out and see how that helps them some. Uh, but I know, uh, I know in the West Oaks, uh, band, we're down to, uh, one clarinet and one flute, uh, that's, uh, that's actually playable, and a lot of the kids have to buy their own instruments. Um-
And if you get into purchasing equipment, if it's over $500, that's when we would need to look at capital outlay, and maybe add a line item for just pieces of equipment. But to other items you mentioned, that, that would fall here on the expense piece.
And I have spoken with the, uh, band director there at West Oaks about getting us a list that we might could put under the capital budget, uh, for instruments. Uh, but a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the kids have to buy their own instruments. And, um, you know, um, I don't know of many other, uh, many other classes that we have in the school that they have to buy their own materials for their class. And a lot of kids can't afford it. So I think that is something I'd like for us to look at, and maybe increase that some, to where it's a little bit, um, I mean, we've got, I think we've got 75,000 in here for, uh, for the athletics, just in case their gate fees are low because of the COVID. Uh, so if we can spend money on that, um, I think it's important to help out the band, too.
Uh, I'd like to say I support, um, um, fall on that, because, um, I don't think that they have enough money to even buy any instruments, and that has been, um, for years and years and years. And, um, there are a lot of instruments all throughout the whole county that are just laying there, can't be repaired, because there's no money to repair it, because the money is, you know, used up. And most of the students do rent to own their instruments. And, um, that's, you know, expensive for the parent. But, um, they, if they could repair the instruments of their, or buy a few extra instruments, then students could use the ones at school until they graduate. That's just a thought, but I do support Mr. Robertson on that idea.
So when yours, it, a- again, just so that we are on the page and bring back a revised budget that, that matches what you're saying, with what she's saying, that over $500 would be for instrument purchase, do you have an idea of what a, and, and again, without talking to a band teacher here tonight, uh, if you're saying three to 4,000 for secondary schools, are you thinking, you know, still 1,000 or 2,000 for sheet music and repairs, and then a couple of thousand for, in, that come out of capital? Or are you saying three to 4,000 for sheet music and repairs, and then some more out of capital for purchases?
Well, some, some of the instruments, um, some of the bigger instruments, some of the percussion items, um, are, are gonna be, you know, a tuba or sousaphone, for example, is gonna be five or six or $7,000. They don't buy them very often, but every now and then, I think, uh, West Oaks was probably, uh, supplied with instruments when it was opened, and then I don't know that they supplied them with instruments since then. Uh, some of the big drums are, are items that would eat up the whole budget. Uh, and then some of those would go over to capital, I think, because they're over $500 from what Ms. Moore told me. But still, there's some of them that they can repair for less than $500. Uh, so I would, I would suggest maybe, uh, uh, to try, uh, maybe a 3,000 for a high school and 1,000 for middle school, or 2,000 for middle school, maybe 4,000 for high school. Um, that would be, uh, 12, and, uh, it'd be about 18,000 total, if we went four for high school and 2,000 for middle school. Um, just something that they can maybe start to replenish their, their needs. I mean, they, they've been strapped for so long, uh, that I, I'm sure they all have a list of things that they would need. And that's just dropping a bucket compared to, um, resurfacing one of the tracks. We spend 500,000 to resurface a track, where how many track kids? How many kids run track? 20?
Yep.
But, yeah, and the band has 50 or 60 kids in it. So to me, it just seems like it's a little bit out of whack. You know, we got, uh, we got one side that we're spending quite a bit of money on, and then we got some other kids that are not, not athletes, but the band is very important to them. So I'd, I'd like to see it, even it up a little bit to, to where, um, um, and the band, and playing the instrument is good for their development. Uh, that's been proven over and over again. Um-
Could we suggest maybe getting a estimate from the band directors?
I've asked for an estimate from Ms. Gockel, the, uh, band director at West Oaks, and I haven't received it yet. I've asked for an estimate from Ms. Gockel, the band director at West Oaks, and I haven't received it yet. I don't know if anything's come up, told her to give it to the principal and send it on up the, send it over to here and we maybe would get it at our meeting. I haven't heard back from her, but I'll-
That would allow us to know how much to budget in the capital for.
Yeah, because I'd hate to say we need 4,000 at the high school and 2,000 in the middle school when Southeastern's middle school band is four times the size of South Stokes High School's marching band.
Yeah.
So let's give the money where it's needed. I mean, I've got, I understand and I'm wholeheartedly and art is basically the same way.
Yeah. We'll follow up with that.
Mr. Rose, if you could get in touch with the band directors and see what they would say, you know, obviously not to replace every instrument in one year, but what a good replacement plan for instruments would be out of capital.
Replace or repair.
And then what a repair and sheet music, because that would come out of current expense. Anything less than 500 would come out of current expense. So what a repair sheet music type budget would be. We're right now giving them $1,000 each. What would be a, what would they appreciate could use in that regard? And then what a capital line item that, you know, whether we said 10,000, $20,000, we're just kind of, kind of like our fall protection. That, we're just saying this off the top every year, we need $20,000 for band equipment. Or is it 10,000 or is it five or whatever? So if you could get with them and see if we could come up with a number to bring back to our next meeting.
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have right now.
As far as concerns, I mean, I mentioned this a couple of years ago and we did up our page nine, number one instructional supplies for K-12. You know, speaking of learning loss and resources in the classroom, I I just feel like this is the item that affects each school's, each principal's budget, correct? And we did up it by a minimal amount and I do feel like that is much appreciated. It gives those principals the the ability and flexibility to hire an assistant, even if it's for a few months or, you know, get that help in the classroom or if it's a certain program or a certain set of books or anything along that line. You know, that's, I mean, that's that each school's budget. So I would just ask that you consider increasing the instructional supplies for K-12. I don't think it had been touched in many, many years when we did a couple of years ago. And again, that's just a direct way to, I feel like, help in the classroom and and give those schools, individual, every school, you know, a little relief there. Again, I think that could be tied back to the ESTER funding when you talk about learning loss and the ability to bring in tutors or just anything that a teacher would need to be more effective in the classroom. Because I'm sure every teacher has a list of, a wish list, right? Things that they could help them be more effective.
I know, speaking on that, I know there's been many times, our daughter's a junior in high school now and there's been many a times that we bought copy and paper, whatever it is, and donated it to the class. They just don't have the, they just seem to never have enough supplies. And when you get your list at the beginning of the year, you know, here's what, here's what we need for you to donate or for your child to bring, it's always, it's always a whole list of supplies that you would think that they would already have. So I would tend to agree with that.
And then, I mean, personally, I understand what, or I like what I'm hearing from Mr. Rogers as far as contracting some of the media, as far as the tech portion of it that are really into troubleshooting a network or, you know, helping getting, you know, certain programs up and going again that are teachers in the middle of a class and it fails on them and they just, you know, can't quite get around it. And then I'm not sure that I'm following Ms. Messick as far as in the blue on our budget with those positions. Were you considering not not having those 11 positions for media assistants? Or just wanting more technology?
I was wanting a different title because I feel like, okay, well, the media assistants in the high school, do they help with technology right now? They don't. There's just a different mindset when you say media assistant and then you say technology assistant. And I'm going to be hiring, not me personally, you know, but whoever's hiring them. When you go to be interviewed and you're being interviewed for a media assistant, you've got a different mindset than if you're going to be interviewed for a technology assistant. You know, well, gosh, I might not should apply for that because I don't know how to fix a console or I don't know how to fix a smart board. And then you know you'd be, you know, someone would look at you and say, well, how about fix that? So there's a mindset that's different.
In the high schools, it's varied, like one assistant's really comfortable helping with technology and helps quite a bit. But they're over the distance learning lab or the college learning lab. So they're over that too. So they've got students that they're to maintain and help and with that.
Right. I'm sure that they have a big job too. But no, I wasn't saying not hire them, I was just saying choose a different title. That was just my thought because I know that a lot of people in our area, their mindset goes back to when, say, 10 years ago. I don't know, did you have a media assistant when you were at Mount Olive?
I did at first and then I did not.
Okay.
And then when I went to Chestnut Grove, I had one and then I did not.
So I know we've had the-
It's challenging.
Sure, it is. I'm just trying to say, I think that right now in the next couple of years, with all the technology, equipment that we're buying, it'd be helpful to have people that you have to repair it.
And the four tech assist, I mean, tech support positions listed in ESTER would be utilized more in the high school or district wide?
Okay. At your place tonight is a updated COVID-19 update for 1921. The bottom of that, and yes, this can be very much related to budget because it can have a budget impact, but it's also separate in that it's ESTER's money, not current expense and not capital, which we go to the county commissioners with. But as you know, we will receive around 13.3 million dollars.
Where's that list at?
It was laying at your place. It says at the top, board COVID-19 update for 1921. But you didn't put the update in the folder, correct? You just laid it out outside of there? Okay, the ones that had the folders here might have been put in your folder. With that ESTER's money, there's, there's, again, I I provided with y'all a list early last week, but I've revised some of that based on, after I got your input, I took it back to the directors to to look at revising that. And so we looked at the air purification system in the duct that would cost $800,000. We did look at some window replacements at about 2.2 million. We did talk about the potential of adding eight custodians for cleaning for COVID. And again, while we would love to have them forever, four years is better than no years. That would be a 1.4 million dollar thing. Special populations, learning laws, that 32,500 could be used for instructional supplies and those type of things that you mentioned, Ms. Knott, in the classroom. It's how can we enhance learning in the classroom? That would be at the top of page two. Summer school is a requirement that we have to pay for. We did look at a higher number this first year where we know we have to pay some bonuses. We have to look at some specialized summer, summer curriculum. But then if we reuse that curriculum for the next few years, that number could come down each year for about 3 million for five summers. We looked at a textbook replacement for math at about $800,000. Again, one social work position for mental, social, emotional health for four years at $250,000. A director of social emotional health, Chromebook replacement, again, for technology needs. The, I went ahead and pulled the 11 media, and if you'll see here, it says slash tech assistant. These positions, even though it's it's not the traditional media assistant, it is a strong emphasis on technology which would be promoted in the hiring process, that they need to have these technology skills to be able to do this. And so I have it, you know, based on that conversation last week, media slash tech assistance is the way that this is listed now. And then smart board replacements, which again, when we come back to capital, that could free up capital money for the next several years. And then the technology assistants, having that on that ESTER's funding as well, that could relieve some items. Again, if we wanted to look at the instructional coaches to come out of that and maybe even add another one to that, it would have to come out of something. So whether that came out of window replacements or custodians or or something else, we could certainly move some of that funding around. But based on our, the feedback from the board last week, this was kind of a revised list that we had put together to kind of match that funding. And again, as I stated before, the danger with personnel, it's the good and the bad. If you pay personnel out of this, what happens in four years when this money goes away? Are the needs still going to be there? Well, the needs are here today. This is a way to pay for it for four years. It's not a long-term fix, but it is a four-year fix. And we can choose not to spend any of it on personnel and just buy things with it, but that doesn't relieve the personnel needs that we have right now. Ms. Barker has looked for contract services with, for tech companies. Found one company that could provide some help. I don't know if they can provide all the help we need. You've been in those conversations. South Data has said they've about given us all that they can handle right now. Would you like to add anything to that?
And we're, we're one of the few districts that doesn't have a tech team. So it's, I'm enrolling Chromebooks, I'm delivering things, so we're not paying tech hours for things to be delivered. It's helpful to have more heads together. It'd be nice to have a tech department and a central location where they can, we can meet and disperse and go to the schools. They have, South Data has struggled getting to our needs this year. We expressed we needed more help. They've had two people for quite some time. They hired the third person maybe a month and a half ago. So it's been two people since, well, for a while.
And that's not two people five days a week for us?
It's not.
They also serve other corporate entities.
When they're here, they are great.
And extremely responsive. When we had the power outages, they worked with us that Sunday. One of them had a funeral. He was texting me during the funeral, helping me reset servers. So they've been really responsive in trying to meet our needs. They're just overwhelmed too.
They're, they are fabulous. Not having them every day is huge. And, you know, you're talking about a smart board issue or something. When they do come, let's say they're on a Monday and, you know, they don't, don't get it resolved, need to come back the next day, but they can't come back the next day because they're in, at their corporate client the next day. So there's, there's, there's a lot said for having in-house tech team to disperse and just be devoted to Sussex County schools.
Okay, so what do we pay South Data a year?
We're paying them for networking services and support hours.
Here, let me leave for it. How much?
I think it's 198,000. I think it's like right at 200,000.
For two people?
Two not full-time people?
Not full-time.
Well, I mean, at some point, somebody recommended we hire South Data and not hire our own people. So it sounds to me like we got three people in South Data. We just, we're paying them instead of just hiring them. It's a net neutral if we brought three people in-house and just got rid of South Data. Am I missing something?
If we hired two people, we would not be able to continue the contract. That was-
That's my point. You're saying, and what you're telling me is they're great when they're here, but they're not here enough. Well, if they work for us, they're either going to be here or they're going to work for somebody else. I mean, that's just how business rolls.
Right. And and I discussed that. If we, if this were approved, there's, we couldn't continue the South Data contract, but we would love to have two people in-house devoted to Sussex County schools.
When does our contract expire?
June 30th.
Okay.
How many hours a week do we normally have South Data on average?
It's 900 hours a quarter.
900 a quarter? It's not a lot. I'm sitting here looking at the media assistants, for example. Total payout for each one of them was 36,000, but that's insurance, everything. That's our total cost. Okay, our total cost for me, technology engineer, is 92,000. There's a big difference in the pay there. So I'm sitting here wondering because we're around 24, 25,000 actual pay to the person for the media assistant. What kind of level of expertise are we going to get with that compared to somebody that actually knows what they're doing?
And that's what Dr. Rice and I had expressed as well, because when you say assistant, you're not always going to get the level, technical level, you won't.
Exactly.
It would be nice if you could, but for that, you're not going to.
As hard as workforce is to get people today at that pay level, we're wasting 11 positions, in my opinion. Because I know what you're going to get for that kind of pay. So I'm more like Pat, I think we ought to hire a few more engineers and a few less media assistants.
You said you had all, you had found somebody else who was interested in contracting with?
I've been researching, yes, sir. And we've, we've got a temporary contract with them through the end of this year.
Is it a secret?
No, sir.
Then who is it and what are they doing for us?
Nitor, Nitor Solutions. And they've been great. What we would love to see happen is pay them to do the network monitoring and then get our in-house tech people to do the tech support and manage, maintain our schools and our infrastructure within. What's happened, our server, we have dated servers.
Right.
We can't update the patches because they're dated servers. So we're trying to go forward. We're just having to crawl a little bit at a time.
Okay, so how are we paying Nitor services?
The COVID money? COVID wants money.
Do we need to be looking at updating some of this, I mean, equipment that you said? You know what I mean if I'm understanding? We are. We, that's, we're assessing. Right now? Yes, sir.
Okay, so it sounds to me that South Data's going bye-bye. We're going to hire two people and then we're going to be net zero, two and a half maybe, depending on what the budget are, without much effort from the budget.
Potentially, it sounds like that may be, need to happen. Yes, sir. And any other comments? I don't feel like we're at a total resolution with all this, but we may need to schedule an additional meeting to further discuss budget. That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, the next one's a work session.
Yeah, so we'll discuss it further.
And we'll try to leave the main part of that-
And we do want to stay on our timeline.
That meeting for budget. So to not add too many more items to that agenda.
I would like to talk about one more thing.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead, Mr. Brown.
So I could get some. On page three, 18, operations salaries. We've got 16 positions and then we've got two positions. What are those other two positions? Are those like the directors or?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Moore?
The two are for your directors over maintenance and transportation.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know now. I'm going to, I know that we've got several people that have a license and we pay for their license and give them a fee for having it and that's great. I like that. But with these same guys are very well-trained and everything to have a license. They're only getting a 3% raise. Then our directors are getting 5%. Then our directors are getting 5%. And I notice back over here on the back, our classified people are getting 3% and everybody else getting 5%.
That's a projection based on what we expect the state budget to come in at the classifieds to get a 3%. We are a long way from receiving that. It may be, again, they've talked about a $15 bottom level for everybody. There may be a lot more raises go in than that. That's just what we projected it may be.
I just know that it costs the same for a loaf of bread and a gallon of milk for the guy sweeping the floor that does the guy in your position. And I just hate to see the discrep, the separation just keep getting further and further and further apart each time a raise comes around.
And you're correct. The state has been extremely unfair with raises the last several years. Some years, they've taken care of beginning teachers and almost cut the pay of the 30-year teacher on the salary scale. They've held people harmless, but they've cut the pay on 30-year. Some years, they've come through and really assisted principals. Some years, they've come through and done nothing for central office. Some people, some years they have done. So we put this in as a projection of what we think may happen, but we don't know what will happen. But those are state budgets that, you're right, some years, well, it made us very upset last, it was last year or two years ago, where maintenance positions for county employees got a much larger raise than maintenance positions for the school system. And they basically do the same job for one entity or the other, but they gave a bigger raise for one group than the other. And it made no sense to us. But you're right, the state budget is all over the place on those things. This was just a projection of what we thought may happen.
Anything?
But the actual raises would come from the state that we're projecting having to make up supplements and benefits and those type items.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other?
One positive thing that the board did do last year was for our classified, we are now moving them up a step because they had that experience. So that was, that is a positive for our classified employees because they were frozen for so many years. So it's not that much, but it has really helped them. So that, that was a good thing that this board accomplished.
I wanted to ask something. I didn't hear, Ms. Moore, you said maintenance, and what was the other one?
Director.
Director. Oh, oh, director. Oh, yeah, director.
Anything else, Board? I know we need to move on.
This is going to be a quick one. Director of socio-emotional health at $100,000 a year. Well, that salary and benefits, supplements, benefits, health insurance, retirement, what that would be is somebody to organize our guidance counselors, social workers. The, the state has really pushed for the mental health services for students who've been struggling during this pandemic. And we have people, we don't have an expert leading those people. And so we were looking at a coordinated effort to try to get those people more efficient and better at their jobs and better serving our students. Okay, I just, big title. Another director. It's a big job. Big four-year job. Like college, you graduate, you're done. Again, yes. Four-year job.
Next, we have item B, discussion of policy 3000 series. Anything to share there, Mr. Johnson, as far as any major changes to be concerned of or anything that's being omitted?
No, it's still my recommendation that we adopt the recommendations of the School Boards Association with the option for sixth-grade students eligible to participate in athletics other than football. I'm sorry. I apologize. It's my recommendation that we, we do adopt the recommendations of the North Carolina School Boards Association with the option in policy 3620 that we do allow sixth-grade students to participate in athletics except for football.
And that is the practice we are currently doing.
I just know right at the middle school level, it's a bit of a struggle with local clubs sometimes.
Correct. And with your permission, if there's no questions with that, we'd like to put that on for 30-day review and approve those at the next meeting. Next regular meeting? Next regular meeting. Okay, yeah.
Is that okay with consensus of the board? Okay, thank you. We'll do that. Next, we have discussion of installment pay, item C.
Ms. Moore?
Yes, we received notification from the Department of Public Instruction that they will no longer allow installment pay. And by that, it's where our 10-month employees can take their gross pay and divide it among 12 months and receive checks during the summer. Usually, we pay those in June and July. We will do that because we have been taking that out this school year, but effective August for the next school year, that will no longer be allowable. We've come up with some options, what we can do if employees are still wanting to prorate their salary. They can actually do like a direct deposit and let us know the account that they would like for us to send a deduction to. That could be a savings account, checking account, and it can be several accounts. Or also, the credit union offers a summer cash program where they can contribute to that. My understanding, then in the summer months, the credit union will transfer the money out into an account that's been chosen by the employee. So it's working the same way, and in some sense, where we've been deducting over 12 months, that money's been sent to the state for them to hold. But now, basically, they have the option that they can actually put it in their own account and decide how they would like to distribute that out. So I've attached just a copy of a direct deposit form that they could actually fill out for you all, just to see what that would look like. And the credit union is very interested in trying to help employees and said they would be more than happy to meet with people or discuss their option even further.
Would you be interested in doing this in an online version as well? Would that be easier for some?
About the form?
Yeah, like a way to email it to you in an attachment or fill it out online? Just a suggestion.
I'm very careful with that with account information.
Okay, okay, okay. As far as a very secured, okay, understand. I mean, the form looks easy enough to me, and I appreciate you thinking of that option because I think that, you know, could be very, you know, upsetting to some staff. Yes, ma'am? Yes, Ms. Smith?
I want to ask a question. If they decided to do the state employees' version, they have to go to the state employees' credit union?
They would have to establish an account with, with the state employees' credit union if they have not already done so.
But if they have already done so, what do they do?
They would just need to contact them and work out the arrangement for their summer cash program. Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll be providing some information once we wanted to make this board aware, and then we'll send out something to employees, and we'll give them the information and contact numbers for the credit union as well.
I think this will be a surprise and not a happy one for a lot of employees.
Been going on for many, many years. But it is, it is a requirement from NCDPI. They're saying it's no longer meeting their modernization of technology, so.
Right. I mean, for people to get their paycheck once a month, you know, it doesn't bother them, they could, you know, it doesn't even faze them. But people that just get it 10 months, I think it really will.
It's going to have to manage a little bit better personally.
Well, I think that, you know, it'll be not a nice surprise.
Well, I will say, as somebody who's gone through this, my wife worked in a different county than me at one point, and their school district phased it out then, before they had to. We have to now. We don't have a choice. But they did it then, just to be honest, they said to make it easier on our finance department, you do this yourself. And so we set up the summer cash with my wife's paycheck, and we never noticed a difference other than the initial signup, which didn't take long, a few minutes. But then they automatically took it out of the check, put it in the account. She could see it on her statement every month, and then in July, when it was time for it to move, it automatically moved to the checking account, just like her paycheck would have been automatically deducted, deposited in the paycheck. And then in August, it was automatically moved from one account to her checking account, just like a paycheck. So other than her making 30 or 40 cents interest a year, she didn't notice any difference at all in how it was moved to her paycheck after it was set up. So, and then it was set up year to year to year, and it, so it was a one-time setup then. I don't know what it is now, but after that initial shock of hearing it's going away, then it's, it worked very seamlessly.
Well, that's good to know. Thank you for sharing that.
Um, Board, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess, okay?
routes.
Dr. Taylor?
Board members, at your last meeting, at the conclusion of presenting some additional information to you, you asked us to seek information from our community, seek feedback from our community. Last Monday, we put, excuse me, last Monday, I have an electric personality evidently. Last Monday, we put out a survey that was open until this morning. And at closing of the survey this morning at approximately 8:00 a.m., we had received 1,501 responses to our survey that basically had the question, would you support a tiered bus system within Stokes County schools? 63.2% refer, excuse me, responded in the affirmative with yes. 36.8% responded no. We took time, Dr. Rice and I talked this morning. If you'll turn over a few more pages, we have broken this information down into greater detail. We have it broken down by K-5, 612. Then we have it broken down by attendance area or district, north, south, and west. But to answer your question from the last meeting, we have now put this out, and we have received feedback from our community. We're very pleasantly surprised with the number of responses. That's a fairly large response for surveys that we've done recently. So clearly, the, the majority, 63%, responded that they would support a tiered system, bus system in Stokes County. We simply wanted to provide this information to you tonight. Dr. Rice, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Were our teachers involved in this, or was this just parents or what?
This survey went out to everyone. A phone call went out last Monday, and anyone in our phone system received a phone call. It was also placed, put on Facebook. So we had a fairly... And at closing of the survey this morning at approximately 8:00 a.m., we had received 1,501 responses to our survey that basically had the question, would you support a tiered bus system within Stokes County schools? 63.2% referred, excuse me, responded in the affirmative with yes, 36.8% responded no. We took time, Dr. Rice and I talked this morning. If you'll turn over a few more pages, we have broken this information down into greater detail. We have it broken down by K-5, 612. Then we have it broken down by attendance area or district, north, south, and west. But to answer your question from the last meeting, we have now put this out and we have received feedback from our community. We're very pleasantly surprised with the number of responses. That's a fairly large response for surveys that we've done recently. So clearly, the majority, 63%, responded that they would support a tiered system, bus system in Stokes County. We simply wanted to provide this information to you tonight. Dr. Rice, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Were our teachers involved in this, or was this just parents, or what?
This survey went out to everyone. A phone call went out last Monday, and anyone in our phone system received a phone call. It was also placed, put on Facebook. So we had a fairly, as I said, robust response to this. But everyone had a chance to respond, yes, sir.
Okay.
We're still thinking 65,000 to 80,000 a year net savings?
Yes, sir.
We're still thinking students are on the bus half as long-ish?
Our projections are, and Mr. Lang could correct me if I'm wrong, but our projections are the way this model would work, we would actually be, well, we would be reducing the total number of buses overall, some schools would have more buses available to them each day, which would mean that a student's time on the bus would be reduced. And we are predicting anywhere-
From you was, you know, an hour and a half to 42 minutes, right? I mean, just, just sitting, I'm gonna hold y'all-
Yeah, we feel a conservative estimate is anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes at minimum. Some may be larger, some may be a little shorter, but we do believe that this model would reduce ride times.
And not increase the pickup time significantly? We said five to 10-minute increase in pickup time, is that correct?
And that depends on the routing. I mean, again, if in one route scenario, you were the first pickup, and now you're gonna be picked up halfway through the route, just on the rerouting of it, your time may change, but that just depends on how the route is set up in the future. But the overall route should decrease time.
I did some math last week, at the last meeting with the stuff that y'all gave us, the projection numbers that y'all gave us. I had Sandy Ridge at eight minutes total, less ride time, just eight minutes. But I had Lawsonville at an hour and 18 minutes, and I had Nancy Reynolds at 54 minutes per day. That's total less ride time, morning and afternoon combined. Now, what got me to thinking, though, Sandy Ridge probably has about the same number of students as Lawsonville and Nancy Reynolds combined.
That does factor into it, yes, sir.
So, the larger schools, is it really gonna affect them as much, or is it gonna be about the same?
We do believe there will be a change. I cannot predict right now what that change may be. I will tell you that a larger school that is transporting more students, the impact will be different.
Yeah.
But we do believe it will have an impact on all of our schools.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Dr. Taylor?
I just wanna thank both of y'all. Excellent work.
Well, Dr. Rice was instrumental in this as well. Again, we wanted to bring to you an opportunity to save some money as a district and to make our transportation department more efficient. Please bear in mind that we have been doing this in the west attendance area for multiple years now, and it seems to be working well. It has worked well. Now, it will be, if this is something you decide to pursue, there will be a period of transition, transitional period, and we understand that. Yes, ma'am.
I think we've discussed this before. It's just in the west, they start at 7:40. We would be starting in the north districts at 7:20, you know, earlier, putting staff there around seven, 30 minutes earlier. I think they're used to arriving at 7:30 versus 7:00 a.m. going forward. And then I did notice in the information, given that the least amount of gap in totals was like in the north district, K-35, there was only one more vote for yes versus no. And then the south district, K-35, there's what, 12 more votes for yes versus no. So not the big gaps in those areas, you know, that it may appear to be overall.
But to your point, in the west district, it boils down to square miles. There's more miles, there's more distance to travel in the northern districts. That's part of the difference in the time. The west district, a little more concise, a little more, it's closer, basically, not as far. Yes, sir.
The, we're basically discussing this because of the efficiency rating. What, do you know what the efficiency rating would be in the west district where we've already using this? I know our overall efficiency rating is what, 82% or something?
82.6.
Yeah.
Can you come to the microphone? I'm sorry, just 'cause we can't hear you. Thank you.
The efficiency rating is done countywide. It's not actually broken out by district. So, I don't know what each district actual rating is. The DPI does those.
But, but just by, if we go with a tiered proposal here, will you expect it to increase by 10%?
The first year, I think it's probably gonna be more in the 4% to 5% increase, but then that can improve over time, especially if ridership goes up. Ridership is the key ultimately to your improved efficiency and improved budget rating.
And if we, I know Ms. Knight has concern about it starting at 7:20. If we shifted that back to 7:30, it just shifts everything back 10 minutes?
Yes, sir.
So instead of getting out at 2, they get out at 2:10?
Yes, sir.
Shift the high school back another 10 minutes?
It would push high school back a little bit, and I think our original plan was to try to keep the high schools consistent at getting out around 3, what is it, 3:20?
3:20, 3:30.
Yes, 3:30.
So I guess is, how important is that 10 minutes? I think it's whatever, you know, if you get used to 7:20, then between 7:20 and 7:30 is not that much difference.
No.
Well, if we went to 7:30 at the elementary level, now your high school starting time's gonna be closer to 8:40.
8:40?
Yes. Because it would have an impact on the high school starting stop time as well.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Which, in response to Ms. Knight's, yeah, there's one vote difference on the elementary, but there's 21 votes or 13, almost 14% difference on the high school liking it in the north. In the south, there's 23% or almost 50 votes difference.
Well, of course, they're going to school later. I mean, I think that's the thing. I think for these young kids, I mean, 7:20 is just really earlier. You know, I've asked some family members that teach in Madison, and you know, they're closer to 8 in their elementary schools. I mean, I just think there could be, you know, I mean, I do wanna save money, I just think there could be some unintended consequences as far as not being as appealing, oh, I would like to go to Stokes County, but they start at 7:20. I mean, I don't know. I think the car rider line aspect of the mothers, grandmothers, people bringing kids even earlier, I mean, yes, I mean, change is hard, and it would take some getting used to, but I do think there could be, you know what I mean, more tardies for sure, and a little bit of a struggle out of those really young ones, I mean.
I think we started at the beginning of the school year, though. It's starting out at 7:20. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change it at the end of the school year, correct? This will be something that we would start at the beginning of next year.
We wanted to bring it to you early enough for your consideration, and if this is something the board would like to do, then we will need time to communicate this change and share this information with all of our stakeholders. But yes, our recommendation or request would be that we start this system in this coming August when we start back to school.
Right.
No earlier than that.
Right. So it's, I think, when you start that first week in August, if we started at 10 o'clock in the morning, it's gonna be a shock to the system of most kids anyway, because they're used to sleeping till lunchtime. If that's the way it is, it's the way it is in my house anyway. So when they start school, if they start and they get used to getting back into school at 7:20, that's what they get used to. And I think if it saves us money, it's more efficient. We've gotta be efficient somewhere.
Either way, my kids are getting on the bus before 7 now as it is, so I don't want you to think.
Yeah, and King in the west district has been on this system, we started the school over there early anyway.
Since the, they built Chester Road.
Yeah, so it's not a, it's, I don't hear complaints. I don't hear complaints about it, and so-
I think it's just a change for these two districts, yeah, and it's all about, you know.
But it would be starting at the beginning of the school year, and I think that would be easier to adjust to than it would be if we changed right in the middle of the school year.
Definitely, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Well, and two, because this has been an unusual year with a lot of schedule changes and everything, it, you know, it's hard to sort of compare anything to this year. So next year, if we are able to start sort of, quote, "back to normal," then, yeah, it would, you know, like you say, they would get used to it because it's a brand-new year.
Well, we have the, we go to daylight savings time, I think, every spring, and when we do that, we go to school on Friday at 7:40, 7:20, whatever it might be, and when we come back on Monday, it's like it's an hour earlier. And people seem to adjust to that just fine.
Well, then we can tell everybody in the county that every 12 years, the school system has saved them a million dollars?
Yeah.
They're not gonna hate us for that.
No, I think personally, some of the feedback I got from parents in the, you know, K-35 north district, you know, was just, I don't know, not feeling like maybe that what was presented in the survey, like, they had further questions on the why part. They just would've liked a little more information, but-
Well, and unfortunately, we could not put a full-
I know, you can't.
Breakdown in the survey, but we did make sure that they had information to link back to the presentation-
And who to contact.
And who to contact. And we did receive, I received two phone calls, and I think Ms. Jessup received an email or a phone call. So those are only three phone calls that I am aware of with questions, and we answered those questions fairly easily, and folks seemed to be, okay. Now, I did receive one email with a, so that question regarding middle school and high school and how that would work, and I answered that email.
Okay. Thank y'all. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have-
My question is, where do we go from here? How do we either do it or don't? What do you need?
Dr. Rice?
Well, just like everything, this would take a motion from a board member to move it to action, to either this meeting or the next, and a majority after that, or just like anything else, we've given the presentation, if the board chooses not to act on it, it dies and we stay the same.
How much notice do y'all need as soon as possible?
Well, from a personal perspective, if we knew something by May, by your next meeting, probably at the latest, that would give us the month of May to put together communications and share that information, post it to our website, make sure that our families were aware of the change. So the sooner, the better from that perspective.
May 17th is the last meeting we have when we still have access to our students. We can send out phone calls, Facebook, emails, we don't know if they get the information. When they, we still have the kids, we can put a flyer in their hands in addition to that, to help get them to note that that information has gone out. So I would recommend at the latest, at our May 17th, I believe, meeting, that would give us one week, that week and the next week, to get the information in people's hands so they can plan for the next school year.
I think we discussed it.
I'll make a motion, we put it on to action.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second for action. All those in favor of moving it to action?
Uh.
Next, so it'll be-
Just to clarify, action tonight or action at a next meeting?
Tonight, it sounds like. Action, it'd be Item B, the tiered bus routes.
I'm just tired of kicking it down the road.
Next, we have discussion of U.S. Food Bid.
Good evening, Board. In your packet, you have our request for a rollover for bid for next school year. It is the three of a five-year rollover with U.S. Foods. Our food deals co-op put together the bid over spring break and sent it off to U.S. Foods, and they did agree to be our food distributor next year. Again, y'all have any questions?
How soon do we need to act on this?
It's not an action item, it's an information item. We're in the middle of a five-year process.
Okay.
So we're just letting you know that we're, that we are in the middle of that, and what we've done the last two years, we'll be doing in our third year.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. Dillon?
What kind of funds are, is this saving us? Can you put a number on it?
Um, oh, gosh, I don't know. The, the big food distributors go to bid with the North Carolina Procurement Alliance, and that's who we go through. And so they kind of, you know, they send out the food bid. It's huge, it's got every item on it, from salt packets to everything. So it, then it shows us on the end, like, how much it costs per serving. So when we're making our, when I'm going through and making the bid with the group, we can see, okay, so this is gonna cost 20 cents, but with this food distributor, it's gonna cost this. And so at the end, it does, you do save quite a bit of money by going with the lowest bid and the-
Right. Sort of like buying power.
That's exactly what it amounts to, is, well, it's five districts in this group?
Yeah.
So it's just buying power.
Yeah, and so that's one reason we grouped together, because alone, none of the big food distributors would want us, but together, we're bigger than Charlotte Mecklenburg.
The other issue is the hours saved manpower-wise at our place from having to call to order, salt packets to every little thing. We can go one-stop shopping, and that saves tons of time and manpower.
Yeah, so once I turn this in, then when the managers come back in the fall, they can just go it through and order, you know, what they need, so. And basically, we're just giving them a usage estimate, which is a little difficult for next year.
I'm like having a Costco card.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Next, we have discussion of relaunch 2020, 2021.
Exit number F.
Sorry, discussion of federal program monitoring visit update.
Yes, good evening, Board. Every four years, the Federal Programs Division of DPI conducts a federal program monitoring visit for any district that receives federal funds, and that would be Title 1, 2, 3, and 4. And this year was our four-year cycle, and so the Stokes County program was reviewed during the week of April 12th through the 16th. We had four schools that were chosen at random to, and what they look is, they look at the documentation that our schools collect in order as evidence of what our programs are doing. So during the first week, this was a desk review of our documentation supporting the programs across 42 different elements that they have to provide documentation for. And so each one of these covers a variety of the Title 1, 2, 3, or 4 programs. And then on April 15th, our consultants conducted interviews with a variety of stakeholder groups, which involve principals, there's interviews with teachers, and then there also is an interview group with parents. And then in addition to that, there was a central office interview to finalize any documentation. And at the conclusion of our exit meeting, the consultants were, if I would say, very complimentary of the program and the documentation that we had provided for them to review. They will just follow, they will do a follow-up written report for us. They said approximately two to three weeks, we should be expecting that report. But then in a follow-up email, the primary consultant that we deal with on our federal programs did notify me that we met all the requirements, no findings whatsoever with our program, which is a very positive. And then he did say there would be a few items of recommendation, and a lot of times, they have to come in and find something, so they will make a recommendation, and all he said was that was to improve on the great things that we're already doing. So that is good news for our program. So with this standing, then we will have another four years of doing kind of what we're doing, building on the program that we have in place. I do wanna take a moment just to formally thank several people, our staff at our four schools, principals there, and as well as our parents that were willing to participate and provide information to our consultant, as well as Ms. McGee and Ms. Sarah Owens, who was very instrumental in collecting all the data, documentation of things, and getting that organized. So this was a team effort, and I appreciate each one's efforts. Any questions?
Also like to thank Mr. Sands for organizing all of this and running point for all of this for us. So thank you, Mr. Sands.
Thank you, thank you. I know you're getting ready to get into your really busy season, so thank you for all you do, Mr. Sands. Going forward, we have just Item G, Discussion of Relaunch.
Board, provided updated information to you. Again, that's the part that was laying in front of you unless Ms. Boljack had already slipped it in your packet, if you had not received your packet yet. The updated number for the counties from April 16th were 91 active cases, 0.2% of the population, and total nearing 4,000 total click cases, 3,992, or 8.8- and total nearing 4,000 total click cases, 3,992, or 8.87% of the population. Stokes County staff, one active case. We have had two cases since February. So again, thanks to the vaccination clinic, the cleaning protocols, the safety protocols, it's been very manageable with our staff. And we've had 106 total cases for the year, which is 11.78% of our staffing population. Currently, as of this evening, we have six active cases with students, 0.11% of our student body, and 243 cases overall, which is 4.26% of our student body. As I said earlier, below is a summary of the S R 2, S R 3 funding sources. At this time, I kind of need a consensus of the board as to S R 1 funding, of the proclamation announcement that y'all made about me having authority in issues COVID to handle things and getting things back to school, gave me the authority to spend those funds as I saw fit, obviously with multiple inputs from all our directors and schools and needs to get us open. And again, we've been very effective with that. S R 2 and S R 3, again, is a four-year allotment of spending it, three to four years, based on if we file the extension, which I anticipate us doing, for that $13.3 million. My question is, would y'all like for me to continue to receive input and then make those decisions as we move forward? Or does the board want to make those S R 2 and 3 decisions? I know there can be cascading effects with current expense and capital outlay budget. If y'all grant me the authority, or keep granting me the authority to make those decisions, I can certainly have that hammered out before that next meeting. Keep y'all up to date with emails. In that next meeting, do that so we know what the effect that will have on the budget. Or if the board says, no, we want more hands-on input with these monies, again, we can discuss all of them at the next work session. I just need to know your, your direction for me so that I know how to proceed.
I mean, are we okay with you continuing to gather the information or, you know, that you would like?
I, I, again, I work at the pleasure of the board. If you want me to gather information, I can gather information. If you want me to make decisions, make decision. I'll, I'll do that as well. I plan on meeting with principals this week to get their input as well. I've received your input before and tonight. I can synthesize that and make decisions for S R, for COVID, as y'all stated. Or I can bring this back, and the board can vote on this as budget items, lock the capital and current expense for the county funds and have direct impact on this. And I will make recommendations, but what the board decides you could do. It's just how you want to handle this. And I just, I want to make sure I'm following your expectations.
Uh huh. Mr. Rogers, what's your thoughts on that?
Personally, I think S R 1, and through this whole COVID, you've done a miraculous job. So don't take what I'm about to say as any negative on my questioning your ability. But when we're getting $13 million and we are answering to the public, we need to have some input. COVID is trending downward in a positive direction. So I think at some point, we're out of the COVID curve, and now we're in the recovery curve. And this is the job we were elected to do, to, to help assist run from 30,000 feet. There are some things in here I would like to see different. I'm sure every board member has their own personal preference. So this, again, is not a Dr. Rice did a bad job. This is, it's time for us to start doing ours, to me. So I would like to work on it during the work session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Bryant?
Dr. Rice, you did an outstanding job, but I do have to agree with Mike on this. There's some things each one of us has, you know, that, when we talked the other day, we discussed some different things. And, you know, if we decide in the work session, I think it'd just be a better overall experience for all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Messick.
Well, Dr. Rice, I agree with the other two board members. You did an excellent job carrying us through COVID and the S R 1 fund. But like the other two board members, I would appreciate being more involved with S R 2 and S R 3, because it is 13 million.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messick.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, I don't think, I don't think Dr. Rice could have done any better of a job so far handling this and getting us through the COVID, and not only Dr. Rice, but the whole staff. Sometimes it's the head, you take the, maybe take a lot of the criticism and, and spread the compliments around. And I know you're good doing that.
Everything that was done right was because of them.
Exactly. So I think the whole staff, everybody in this room has done a tremendous job, and we really appreciate that. But I think probably, like everybody said, I think with this, with this opportunity here that we have, with this type of money, with these, these types of funds, that we probably would need to have some input into it, maybe hammer it out at the work session. I'd like to see maybe come back with some updated numbers that, that we've talked about here and, and get some, and kind of run it back by us again, and let's make, tweak it a little bit more. And I think it'll be fine. I don't think it's going to be changing drastically, but, but I would like to have a little bit more input in it, too.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Dr. Rice and staff. We couldn't have done it without your leadership. And I like what you have presented, and I think it's a great outline and groundwork, and, and shows us where all our really big needs are. I think it's just the minor, minor changes and having the flexibility to do so. I think that's it.
And again, I do plan on taking this to the principals this Wednesday and getting their input as well.
Okay, good.
And afterwards, I'll summarize that and send that out to the board, and you'll have that for the work session as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Dr. Rice?
Yes, ma'am.
When we were having that, I know it wasn't a webinar, but when you conducted those talks with us about S R 2 and S R 3.
Yes, ma'am.
You gave a, online, you gave some type of whole chart that had the different categories in it. Do you remember if I'm talking about?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, I don't have a copy of that.
All right, it should be in the email I sent y'all on that Wednesday.
You're running that off yourself.
I just printed it. Yeah, he sent it as an email.
Yeah.
Printed it off.
Okay. Well, I was hoping we would get that tonight, but that would be good if you could.
Okay, I'll get, make sure you get a copy of that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Knight, can I make a point of order for, just so that the board is aware?
Yes, sir.
Then the work session is on May 3rd. The deadline for the application is May 7th. In order for us to guarantee that we would receive the funds before July of August, after the summer, which is, you know, with one of the components being summer school.
Right.
If we're not able to get the application in by May 7th, they have told us that the money would not drop until after or around the time school starts. So that is concerned with.
Does that make you nervous to wait that close to the deadline?
It makes me very concerned with, with the fact of writing the grant, trying to get it all completed in that timeframe. I'm, I mean, I understand the input, and I appreciate that, but at the same time, I just wanted to make that point of order.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I mean, would the board be available to meet an additional meeting? Or do we, you know, as far as next Monday, the 26th, or another day that is personal for me that could be available would be like the 29th? I don't know if that works for y'all's calendar. If you would like to look, let me know, and we could.
Why can't we meet next Monday night?
That would be fine with me as well. I said either day, next Monday or Thursday. It depends on availability for the board.
I think Dr. Rice would probably have all of his information together by next Monday night. Is that correct?
That'd be correct.
So why don't we, I'm okay with meeting next Monday night.
6:00 PM here, Monday, the 26th. Okay.
And then, and put it all together if we can, and then that, that gives them a good week and a half or two weeks.
And then Mr. Sands is, and many others are not quite as nervous. I understand that. And thank you for that information there, Mr. Sands.
Will it just be about the summer school, Mr. Sands?
No, I believe.
Is that what you're concerned about the most, just?
The S R 2 and S R 3 money, money.
The whole, every bit of it?
Yes.
Oh, so you'll have to write the grant for S R 2.
Depending on the amount we approve, is that what you're saying?
For $13.3 million.
The entire.
We need one grant for the, for the entire amount.
Well, is that going to give you enough time? That's not a lot of time to write the big grant, two weeks, or a week and a half.
Oh, he's good.
I'm available Thursday.
This week.
She said she's available Thursday this week.
Monday works for me, next Thursday, or this Thursday does.
Okay, so leave it at Monday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM? Is that the consensus?
What did Mr. Rogers say? Is this Thursday you're available?
This Thursday, I'm not.
Okay.
Monday?
Monday, I'm fine.
Dr. Rice, is it with Monday we could?
Monday, the 26th works.
Uh huh. Okay, well, we'll put it down. Thank you.
And we're basically just going to be discussing that on that next Monday.
Just that, S R 2 and S R 3.
Yeah.
And once we have that knocked out, that makes the budget easier, because that takes the variables out.
I think it'll end up being a discussion a little bit about both, if that's okay.
I, I, I mean, yes, because it will have a direct impact on the other.
Right, right. Okay.
Can I also suggest that we don't invite the whole group, because they're working way too hard anyway? I mean, it's not you.
I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I mean, part of it is maintenance, part of it is academic. Summer school, those two have been living intimately with summer school. But the ones that, Ms. Moore, it's money. She's not going to want to spend $13 million. I'm thinking like Ms. Collins or. Uh, we, we will certainly pare down. The ones that don't need to be here will want to be here. Invite who you think is appropriate. Right.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Next, we have the action agenda, item A, approval of personnel and coaching. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. All those in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Next, we have item B, approval of the tiered bus routes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Robertson. Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed?
And I oppose.
So that passes. Next, we have information and announcements, and we can just read what we have here in front of us or posted online with email.
May 1st is early graduation, early college graduation. And also, in this packet tonight, you received a copy of an email from Ms. Jessup regarding the retiree event. Please take time to read that.
Yes, sir.
Because due to the size of it and the restrictions that we're still under, we have given you some more detailed information about that event on May the 13th. So please take time to, to read that email. Any other questions?
I don't think so. I know that the board has a little bit further business to do for closed session, so we would need a motion to go into closed session.
We need a motion to resume closed session for the reasons initially stated.
I make a motion to resume closed session.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Bryant. All those in favor?
Uh huh.
Uh, thank y'all so much.
If Ms. Jessup could stay for one part of the closed session.
I'm in the short road. I've been kicked out of this place before.